Alright, people of New Babylon, how are we doing today?
Beautiful day.
I want to thank everybody for being here and also I do want to take a moment and say how proud I am of everybody else here. What we're building and how things are thriving. We are closing in on Contract 200. Almost 200 contracts completed and that's not a small feat in New Babylon. You guys have been working. Every time I look around and I see new projects coming together, either it's material moving, new builds going up, supplies being traded between different kinds of hands in New Babylon. That is all thanks to you guys. You make it possible through your contribution through the contract system. And with that being said, thank you for keeping it alive and keeping it growing. Now, as we move forward, there's gonna be a lot of changes that happen within the Merchant Guild. One, as you see the contract book and the bulletin system and the contract system done through the Merchant Guild. If you're a business looking to do contracts and wanting to work with the Merchant Guild, especially how things are gonna move forward with import and export. There's gonna be just a one Babalari fee per one contract you draft. So let's say, you know, a business has a couple of contracts they want to do for their business and they want to just do it through the bulletin board and the contract system. The Merchant Guild asks for one Babalari as a fee to authenticate the trade within the contract system moving forward. Also, moving forward with the Merchant Guild, you are not gonna get paid through Babalari. It's gonna be a check made from the Merchant Guild to you, where you'll be using our banking system to where you'll be finding our banker and cashing that check for your Babalari and that's how you get paid moving forward, alright? So, there's gonna be a little bit more paperwork involved and an extra little stuff for you guys to secure the Babalari you need so you can feed yourself at night. So really, thank you. You guys have really helped out the Guild thrive. Without you, the Guild cannot thrive. We're not just hitting numbers as far as contracts. We are making numbers and we are building things. All thanks to you guys. Thank you and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you, Merchant Guild.
Thank you, Merchant Guild.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. How's everybody doing today?
Doing well, Mar Duke.
Doing amazing!
What day are we on, Sap?
Fifty-two, something like that.
Holy shit, day fifty-two, guys. Day fifty-two, huh? Unbelievable how far we've come. Now we have, uh... The bank is up and running. The Merchant Guild, uh, stronger than ever, coming up on their 200th contract already and I swear we just celebrated the 100th contract like last week, so, pretty impressive. We got applicants pouring in, thanks to Eliza. A lot of applicants to go over this week. Uh, the Sheriff's Department and the Warden seem to be being ran well. The security's doing well. Library's thriving. It's been good to see. We've uncovered some ancient history about, uh, you know, old Babylon. This has been very eye-opening, hopefully, for most of us here. The, uh, the island, a lot of work being done there. Aviation. Uh, sailing, seas, import, export, international trade. It's kinda crazy to think this is all actually happening here. Now, before we go over anything, the first thing we actually should do is, uh, where the fuck is Skipper Jones at?
Oh, Skip's gotta like, do his thing.
Come on, brother. As you all remember, from Skipper Jones's trial. He stood trial about a week ago for coming across a very interesting dilemma where Edgar was facing death. And Skipper Jones convinced himself that he had to make a hard decision. Whether to bring him to a hospital out of New Babylon so he could live or take the risk of not doing that and seeing what happens. Long story short, he brought him to the hospital, shit went down, whatever. From there, he meant, you know, his punishment. Which was to be exiled for a few days out of New Babylon, then to return and to take a vow of silence up until Monday. Then on Monday, he will recite the Codex from memory or be permanently exiled. And I also want to emphasize and stress on the fact that, uh... From that trial, I stood here and I made a decision as the Mar Duke to not use third-party quote-unquote services anymore, including medical and hospital. There was also a situation with Polly uh, regarding a musket that I thought we would have moved forward to learn from. It was very interesting that, uh, you know, around a week later, maybe not even a week later, it seems we have people still committing the same exact actions as the ones before. And it's even more interesting when we had a great trial and a lot of preaching at this trial. A lot of, I thought situations, interesting dilemmas we've resolved, or at least decisions I've made to resolve them for us was told that day. "And to Skipper's luck, I decided to show mercy and not permanently exile the man in hopes that we can keep learning and growing. But now it's getting to a point that I don't even know if that is working, considering you fucking idiots keep doing the same shit over and over and over." Drop skip.
"The Holy Codex is as followed. Thou shalt not depend nor rely on any outside institution, persons, or things. Do not take food, medicine, cars from outside New Babylon. Thou shalt rely and depend only on New Babylon and its people for all things. Use and consume only that which is made through New Babylon. Thou shalt be proactive. Do not wait around to be given task. Keep up to date with the job boards. Ask what's needed. If there's a vacuum, fill it by taking the initiative. Thou shalt not be idle. Do not just hang around, be lazy. Thou shalt be productive. One must keep on working and using their time effectively towards bettering and building New Babylon always. Thou shalt respect the traditions of New Babylon. Attend meetings and other such traditions and ceremonies as they develop. Thou shalt not commit nor conspire to commit any harm towards any Babylonian institution or New Babylon itself. Treason, sedation, spilling secrets, sabotage, extreme and gross negligence, and nor sharing affairs with any outsiders. Thou shalt not commit nor conspire to commit any harm or injury towards any Babylonian. Lying, stealing, sowing discord, or acting with any intent to harm one another. Thou shalt respect the hierarchy and order of New Babylon. Members of the community will respect the distinct roles and responsibilities of each sector and their appointed specialists. A doctor will not interfere with the duties of a mechanic, just as a mechanic will not interfere with medical matters. Likewise, when an elder speaks, his rank is to be respected as directed to be given due consideration. In the final Codex, thou shalt act with integrity towards Babylon and the Babylonians. Be truthful without deceit towards one another. Honor commitments and any deals made with one another. The nation that makes habit over lying upon others soon finds itself at the mercy of others. As you all know, I should not be standing here today, but here I am. I want to warn you all that being exiled is not something I wish upon anyone. It's dark, it's lonely, and it breaks you. Should I be without our Lord and our people of New Babylon? I wish you all the best."
Skipper Jones has served his sentence. Again, I remind and emphasize, we will not hold his past against him. Pray he serve this time. It's fulfilled his punishment. And we move forward. No one is to still treat him as if he did those things any longer. We're not going to be like Los Santos or the outer world. We're going to forgive and forget as long as the punishment is served. There's sirens.
Polly, how we looking up there?
Looking good. It's heading towards Sandy.
Alright, um, exams are this week. We're back. I found my backpack. We're back to normal. Exams are this week. I'm thinking, uh, probably start on Wednesday, maybe Thursday. One of those two days when it'll start. I'm not sure how we're doing it yet. Probably whoever's awaking around those day, uh, either or, on those days, we're just gonna hand them out and start then. And then we'll get to everybody as we see them. Alright, study up. Make sure you, uh, you are ready to pass again. Uh, you fail, you are exiled. Where the fuck, Barry been around? Where the fuck this guy been?
Somewhere.
Right here, right here.
With Oshanka.
Alright. Uh, okay. I need to speak, uh, is Hassan here? Hassan?
Um, no.
Hassan is normally awake pretty late, Mar Duke, except for the weekends.
Okay. Alright, Polly and Eliza, please approach this stage. He took a couple steps back, Polly. I'm gonna get so goddamn close.
Sorry.
Alright, um... You know, it's, it's an interesting path that we've gone down here in New Babylon. I'm trying to keep most things transparent, which I find, uh, kinda interesting how we just came that, kinda came down that route naturally. So I'll continue to try and do that. And, uh, well... For those of you that don't know, on, uh, Thursday, I believe it was Thursday, uh, long story short, we had a vision that led us to a tree. A bunch of shit happened. Get filled in with everybody else. I'm not repeating all that shit. I've done that story like forty-five times already.
There's Monday vibes, man.
From that story, I guess more things kind of stemmed. Or maybe even spiraled a bit over the weekend. I want to make one thing clear. Apparently I have to make this clear. Brian Knight is not Shai Halud. You guys understand that, correct?
Yes.
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 Okay, so why were we treating him like he was Shai Halud over the weekend then?
Hmm. Oh, dear.
This is a question for Eliza and Polly to answer, by the way.
If I may speak plainly, I do not see that gentleman as any sort of powerful space worm.
Polly?
I am, I was torn on the fact that, you know, I didn't know if he was our only connection with Shai Halud through his communication visions. I am, this is why I kind of stayed away from it. Also, my blood is not pure, so I couldn't donate any.
Space worm!
Okay.
Jesus.
So, I guess my next question would be then, how come we decided to save his life then?
Less of a we decision and more of my decision and my own alone.
Polly, you still gotta answer the question, buddy. She ain't gonna fall in the sword for you.
I am, well, during the discussion, we all, like I said, I was on the fence. Fifty-fifty, I saw positives and negatives. I, I don't have the visions you have. So I felt as if I couldn't know the right answer. I am, we all said it would probably be safe without you or Alphonso being around to not do it. I am...
Yeah, yeah.
And that, yes, I am... And then when we went to approach the sheriff and told him no, Eliza had a change of heart.
Alright, so we can pause on Eliza for a second and I guess explore this story with you. So, so you had no, so what you're saying is you had no, uh... What's the word I'm looking for here, Sap? Give me the word, Sap.
Understanding?
You had no understanding of what was going on? I don't even know if that's the right word, but we can go with that.
Perhaps culpability, sir.
Ah, it's gotta be words from Sap, guys. I'm sorry. Sap, give me another word, brother.
Perception?
Wow, you're really bad at this. Alright, Polly, did you, so you, you had no assistance in what happened? Zero. Zero participation?
I mean, I, I was there. I...
Well, aside from being there, you didn't, you didn't contribute conversations, help, uh, I don't know, uh, transport Brian Knight somewhere, have fucking meetings with these two individuals Frost and, uh, Brian, I believe? Didn't show up to Sandy, were you at Sandy, helping the, helping the blood get taken? You weren't involved in any of that, or no?
I, I mean, I was there. I engaged in conversations, but I, I did not physically assist.
Why not?
I'm, I felt it was Eliza's choice. I'm, she was the high priestess around and she supported her decision in that.
Alright, so if you're gonna support her decision, why not support her in action, though? It doesn't make any sense.
I guess I did in spirit by being there.
What was that? Can you repeat that?
I guess I did in spirit by like being there physically.
Yeah, but so you are claiming you had no involvement other than being a bystander, correct? Or am I wrong in saying that?
I mean, essentially, yes. I mean, we had the discussion. We, we decided, uh, you know, Hassan said that if we made the wrong decision, he shall take all responsibility. And then Eliza, you know, when we presented it, she changed her mind.
Okay, so, at any point, did you feel like you were doing something wrong?
Yes, I am, which is why I couldn't give an answer because I saw positives on both sides. Didn't know.
Okay, pause, pause. I don't give a fuck about what you saw. Did you feel this entire situation, being a bystander, did you feel like there was something wrong going on that shouldn't have been being done?
Mixed feelings. Part of me felt it was the right move and then part of me felt it was the wrong move. I, I can not say anymore than that.
So which part was the right move in your mind?
I am, well, I didn't know how his connection is with Shai Halud. You know, it was said he was the devil, but he did show us the tree. I didn't know if there was other things maybe he needed to show what would happen if Brian Knight was dead. But the other part of me...
So part of you felt was right because you thought he might have a connection to vision. Got it.
The other part of me, uh, well, he's not a Babylonian. I'm, and they also took Uncle Finesse's blade. I'm out of his consent. So like, I was torn on like, hmm, fuck the cops, you know? They were giving us a lot of shit. They're taking our stuff. So that's why I was sitting on the fence.
Did you ever bring up these concerns at all?
Uh, yes, it was discussed that our, our sidebar that we had, away from the sheriff.
And we is who? Can you aim out every individual that was in the sidebar, please?
Uh, Eliza, Hassan, myself.
Okay.
CJ was present very early, but she, she said she didn't want to be involved in the decision-making. This was like free us getting there. So she removed herself.
Did you leave the situation at any point? Did you remove yourself from the situation at any point?
I'm... No.
Did you get your blood tested or drawn?
No, I was told the second the doctor saw me that I wasn't pure.
What does that mean?
I don't know. I think maybe they think I get there with it someday.
Okay, so were you, were you on the way to the hospital to get your blood drawn at any point?
No, we were on our way to hear out the doctor.
Meaning what?
I am, trying to get to the bottom of, of this whole fucking blood thing with Brian. It's really confusing. Why does he need Babylonian blood to survive? Wanted to hear it out.
So you wanted to hear it out, you heard it out, and then what?
I'm, that's when we made the decision not to proceed and Hassan was gonna take any fall if, you know, he did have some sort of connection with Shai Halud. And Eliza made the decision to donate the blood. We left. I am, then the sheriff came out and presented Eliza and I with the musket back. And then we walked back to Babylon.
Why did the officer have a musket in the first place?
I am, well, Hassan, it slipped out. The sheriff said, um, he's gonna ignore it. And then, you know, I said to, after Eliza was making the donation, I said, well, you know, reminder for you guys who said that, uh, you owe Babylon. And he said, yes. And everybody showed that by not taking the rifle. Hassan didn't like that. Hassan proceeded to say, well, you're not gonna use this as leverage over me. Upon leaving, he threw the musket at the sheriff and walked out of the building. That's when Eliza and I were discussing, should we go get it back? And I said, I don't know. It makes this look really bad, like begging for a musket back. I think we leave it. During that debate, the sheriff and Okto came outside, said, Polly, come with me. I walked into the lobby. Okto pulled out the musket, handed it to Sheriff Frost. Sheriff Frost handed it to me. No words were said other than them saying, please don't let us see this again. They walked away. And I walked out of the, the medical center with Eliza.
Okay. Alright, anything else, Polly?
I'm, not really, no.
Alright, take a seat. Alright, we'll set forth your punishment. You don't need a trial. Alright, Eliza.
What question do you have of me?
Why did you decide to save Brian Knight?
I'm remiss I did not make the decision sooner.
Skip, put the hood back on, if you don't mind.
What the fuck?
I'll continue, sorry.
If we strictly rely on what is only laid out in plain print in either the Holy Testament or the Holy Codex to make the correct decision, then that means that we, as a collective, have a moral shortfalling. I reckoned with the Codex before coming to my decision. Outside of New Babylon, I would have given my blood outright, regardless of the fact that these very same individuals would very likely not do the same were they in my position. And to be perfectly plain, they didn't when they were in my position. I know for a fact that these very same officers would have thrown me under the bus or used me as yet another piece of cannon fodder for whatever their aims are. And I'm certain that other Babylonians here have experienced the very same. So this was not a transactional thought in my mind at all. In reckoning with the Holy Codex, it does state, "Thou shalt not depend nor rely on any outside institution, persons, or things. Do not take medicine, food, or cars." I took into consideration the fact that I would not be receiving any sort of benefit in my actions. And the due benefit is saving a man's life, doesn't matter if it's Brian Knight, someone that I'm certain quite a few people are quite disappointed might still be alive. But I thought about, how will this reflect upon Babylon, as I know I'm not the only one making this decision? And I will admit that leaving a man to die, regardless of who he is, regardless of who is, what his station is, did not sit right with me. Nor did I think it would reflect well on Babylon as a whole. Not to turn us into some sort of blood bank, which we are not because we as individuals should have the right to make that decision for ourselves. Simply by virtue of the fact there was a man dying in a hospital bed and I had an opportunity to at least lend a helping hand in that direction.
Thank you. Yeah, I should be fine, I should be fine. Thank you.
I wouldn't be here without my convictions and I would be wrong to not stick with those convictions in my duties here.
Alright, I'll consult with Harry and Sap for a moment. Take a seat.
I'm gonna be honest, I don't know if I can punish either of them.
Well, I mean, trial anyways. Punishment for sure, but a trial, I don't think either of them deserve a trial, really.
Trial not, I think you punish them for using outside technology, not for the principle the mortals are believing.
Yeah. You wanna, you wanna handle the punishments, Harry?
Uh, yeah, I'll, um... I'll think through their penance, but yeah, I mean, announce that, you know, it's Rule Two of the Codex.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Hassan might be facing trial. I need to speak to him, but the reality is, uh, Eliza being diplomatic actually isn't a bad thing for New Babylon. Like, remember, like, we're not fucking Cyprus. We are trying to have a positive relationship with the outside world. So if she was operating under that sort of thinking, then I can't remember the punishment for it, especially when I made that hijab, you know? Public relations and shit.
Right, right, for sure.
Maybe just ask her about like, you know, whether, you know, they hooked her up to like a machine, you know what I mean? Maybe see if she already formed.
So we punish and fine her for the, uh, for, for that, but I'm gonna leave that up to you, alright?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I don't wanna, you know, the punishments like that, you and the sheriff's office can handle it and then, you know, big trial shit, you know, the judge and the Mar Duke can handle it.
Of course, of course. Alright. I'm Hassan's hip.
Yeah. Alright, Eliza, um, you will be facing punishment from the sheriff and the warden. They will, they will decide, uh, your punishment for, uh, again. Uh, the way of thinking actually was wrong. I kinda like that you're thinking in that way. Uh, it is important to remember that we, you know, we're not a gang or some sort of secretive, uh, you know, entity. We are trying to have some sort of relationship with the outside world and some sort of contact. So I don't think it's, the, the, the thinking wasn't wrong. Uh, the only thing it really did do wrong was, again, we had a whole trial over this fucking hospital bullshit and I ruled that no one is to go there any longer and you went there and got your blood drawn. Uh, that does not need a trial. It's something, end of the world. Uh... You know, considering the context anyways, so... The warden and the sheriff will decide your punishment. Uh, moving forward, if you're gonna take blood, just do it in New Babylon. We should have the resources and if we don't, well, that's a problem we have to solve then. Uh, Polly, you're pretty much good. Um, I would say though, you are security and your job is to be, uh, you know, handling outside matters appropriately. So if you do feel like something wrong is happening, uh, maybe sometimes, you know, stand up to it or, or make it apparent if there's no leadership around.
I understand, Mar Duke.
We'll see. Uh, Hassan, I need to speak to him, so hopefully I can see him one day. If not, it is what it is. Alright, moving forward. Another news, uh, guys. It's come to my attention that there's motherfuckers here who think every fucking day, I'm just gonna steal vehicles. I don't give a fuck. Fuck buying a car. I'm just gonna steal vehicles. Well, you know what? Why? How the fuck are you consistently stealing these vehicles? Maybe we should do some inspections and check some pockets, see if there's holding on some lockpicks.
Hmm.
And two, well, thanks to you, now I have to put a ban on outside vehicles. No more use of outside vehicles by anybody. Anybody caught using an outside vehicle will be fined twenty Babalari. Except for and dire situations. Need to get the fuck out of somewhere. Cops on your ass. You gotta save somebody's life. You gotta think quickly. You need to steal a vehicle. That's fine. And it'll be up to my judgment. I don't give a fuck if you deem it a dire situation. If I find out about it and I don't deem it a dire situation, you are fucked. So good luck trying to abuse that loophole, buddy. I actually dare you to try and do it. Anybody caught, you're fined twenty Babalari. Buy a fucking vehicle. Utilize the businesses that are working so fucking hard to provide a service here. Anybody caught, you're fined twenty Babalari. Buy a fucking vehicle. Utilize the businesses that are working so fucking hard to provide a service here. Subish. And to clarify, I'm not talking about the fucking lost vehicles that you're stealing around here. Oh, this is a new Babylon car. No, it's not, buddy. If it ain't come from Chrome, ain't a car built by New Babylon, period. You know what? I'm pissed. Everybody line the fuck up. Security, we're inspecting everybody. Everybody line the fuck up. Monday inspection, line the fuck up.
Two lines, one here, one with a ruch.
Do it up, do it up. Security, I want you guys to do it for once and learn. Polly, inspect this fruitos.
Hey, she, get down here, buddy.
Inspect this fruto.
First a ruch, inspect Polly, make sure he got nothing, buddy.
Yes.
Hey, she, over here.
You got steroids?
No steroids.
How you still big while you in Babylon?
I have steroids. The sheriff didn't offer a horse tranquilizer. I declined. I was tempted.
What you got? What you got?
I, Polly, I search this other frutos.
Irie, Venice, you got any shit on you? I said, no, you may.
No, sir.
No, outside cash.
Uh, probably, I'm not too sure, actually.
He's got outside cash!
Outside cash?
Yeah, cash.